Could I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Monday, December 16th, 2019. Tonight, we do have four public hearings scheduled. We do have one applicant that has requested to withdraw without prejudice. It's on Fletcher Street. Anybody here from Fletcher Street? So the applicant requested to withdraw without prejudice. Is the applicant, you want to be heard on that, sir?
Don't just, they were asking to have it withdrawn. Thank you.
Okay. Any of the board members have any objections? If not, I'll make a motion that we allow the applicant to withdraw on 116-128 Fletcher Street without prejudice.
I'll second the motion.
Motion being second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion is allowed. Good luck, and hopefully you can find some parking and come back and see us soon.
Thank you.
Wish you well. Happy holidays. Moving along on the agenda, anybody here from Thoncliff Ave? Thoncliff? Thoncliff? Okay, the applicant's not here again. So I thought they would be here this evening. Due to the fact that they are not here this evening, and the fact that they have not sent in further continuance, I'm going to put that down as a constructive request for continuance. And Jared, what time, first meeting in January? January? I don't have my calendar with me. Is it the...
Oh, no.
Must be late.
Monday, January 6th is the first.
Monday, January 6th.
Although, I don't know that we've received any items for that meeting. So the next meeting after that is January 23rd. So up to, the January 6th meeting, the application deadline has passed. There is still a public hearing deadline, though, for December 23rd.
So the next one will be in January what?
January 23rd is the next planning board meeting that actually has an open public hearing.
Okay.
Agenda period.
So what I'll do is we'll continue the matter if the board is in favor of that. I would request that we continue the matter. I'll make a motion that we continue the matter to January 23rd.
Second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Okay, one abstained. So we have three. And one abstained. Sorry for that. But since I wanted to get you out of here, since they're not here. So apologize for that. That matter is continued. Moving along on the agenda, the next matter is 705 Dutton Street. This matter's been before us the last couple of times, and it's been continued to work out some of the planning issues. This is 705 Dutton Street. An application was submitted by Grow Team Gardens LLC seeking site plan review, approval to open a marijuana cultivation facility at the above address. The building is in a light industrial zoning district and needs site plan review under Section 11.4 and Section 7.10, and any relief that's requested by the Lowell zoning ordinance. The petition was continued from October 21st and then it'll continue in November due to the fact that I want to work further on the plans as a result of comments from staff. But this time, may we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for the record Attorney Joseph Clamond appearing on behalf of the applicant. Just by way of brief recap, I'm representing Grow Team Gardens LLC. The principal is Dan Landry, who's with me here tonight. Also, the architect, Jay Mason, is with us. Again, the applicant is seeking site plan review for a marijuana cultivation facility, and they're looking to renovate the building at 705 Dutton Street. They would build an enclosed cultivation and production facility within the existing building. The property is owned by Kazangian Enterprises, Inc., and would be leased by the applicant. Currently, that building is occupied by Kazangian Enterprises and also by Artek Sprinkler Fire Prevention. And if the site plan is approved, both of those businesses would vacate the building, and the applicant would occupy the entire building. Kazangian Enterprises does wish to access the site for three specific reasons. One, he wants the ability to tow vehicles across the lot to abutting property he owns to the left of the site, behind the site. Two, he'd like to park up to two tow vehicles on the site, one on the back right side and one behind the building. This is a change from our earlier request to park four tow trucks on the site. Now, it would be two, one on the right rear and one behind the building. He would also like the ability to park up to four passenger cars owned by residential tenants of Wamisit Court along the chain link fence. That's what's currently happening there. That was a condition of some site plan review years ago for Wamisit Court. Now, earlier, we had a swept path analysis which caused an issue for us for fire apparatus turnaround when Mr. Kazangian wanted to keep up to four tow trucks on the site. He's now agreed to park just the one tow truck, not three. And this provided the turnaround access for the fire apparatus. The fire department has reviewed that new plan and that swept pass analysis. And as of November 26th, they approved that plan as long as the tow truck that's behind the building parks no closer than three feet from the building for egress. I do have hard copies of that analysis. I know if it was sent to the board. I don't know if you need additional copies. I'd be happy to hand them out. You all have copies?
Are the board members okay?
Okay. All set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So in the back right of the site, as you look at that swept pass analysis where it says tow truck, formerly, he wanted to keep up to three tow trucks there. It didn't work as far as the turnaround for fire apparatus is concerned. He's now adjusted that and will keep just the one tow truck. And that does work with the fire apparatus, and they've approved the plan. Mr. Kazangian has also agreed not to park any commercial vehicles along the chain link fence on the right of the site. Again, he'll limit his tow trucks to two on the site. One is shown on the right rear of the property. One behind the property is also shown on this plan. He's also agreed not to tow vehicles across the lot from 5:00 PM to 7:00 AM unless there's a snow emergency in the city of Lowell. His permit allows 24-hour towing, but he's agreed not to do that unless there's a snow emergency in the city of Lowell. So Kazangian Enterprise has signed a lease modification agreeing to these conditions. It's the intent of the applicant to clean up this site and provide a very professional operation to remove the scrap metal, the old cars, and the junk that's on the site. And since it's going to be cultivation only and no customers will access the site, the use will be much less intensive than what currently exists. This property, as you know, is in an industrial zone, and we believe the proposed use is appropriate for the site. We believe we've met all of the conditions necessary to cite this business here, and we're going to respectfully, rather, request approval of the site plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody here this evening want to speak in favor of this project? Anybody here in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition?
Good evening.
Good evening. Just state your name and address of record, please. Thank you.
Shirley Blanchard, 8 Wamisit Court.
Donald Sterling, 8 Wamisit Court.
We seem to still be getting their same plan review. To me, nothing's really changed. Mr. Kazangian still wants to operate in there, still wants to tow in there. This is why we're opposing.
It's like, you're going to have customers in there looking for their cars that have been towed. You've got AAA coming to pick up vehicles that have been towed. Every tow company in the state of Massachusetts is in and out of there. Today, we probably had 30-something vehicles in and out. So I don't know how Grow Team Gardens plans on operating in there with Mr. Kazangian in and out, in and out. And we've been opposing this towing since it started. We've had problems with Mr. Kazangian since 1996. So we plan on filing an appeal on this.
Also, my concerns are, he's saying he just wants to park two tow trucks. Well, he's got tow trucks in there. He's also got roll-on dumpster trucks in there. There's a heavy-duty tow truck that's parked in the backyard. That's only used once in a while. Like I said, all day long, it's all the other trucks, the dumpsters in and out. The ramp trucks that back up from down the street at the auto parts into that parking lot to turn around and go up the street. They back up past my house.
They drive in reverse. They don't even drive up the street the proper way. They drive up the road backwards.
They pass Wamisit Court. They pass my driveway to back into the scrapyard to turn around and go up the street or to actually go back down the street again.
You also have the payloader that goes up and down the street with the forks. There's already too much going on down there for any other type of business, as far as we're concerned. If Mr. Kazangian wants to vacate the property altogether, surrender his junk license, then we're all for this plan.
We don't mind if they're in there.
And the towing can...
But we don't want both. It's one or the other.
The police department should be well aware of what's going on with the towing down there. We sent them a letter last December, and nothing's changed yet. Why are they approving this plan when they haven't even made the changes we requested over a year ago?
I don't know what plan you're talking about over a year ago. We just received this plan in October.
Well, supposedly, the police department already approved them going in there with this. That's what was said to us at the first meeting in October, I believe.
Yeah, what happens is, part of the condition for this facility is the police department gets a copy of the plan and thrown to all the other five departments, and they have to have a security plan approved by the Lowell Police Department is one of the conditions of approval.
And does the police department understand that you're going to have towing going on there?
I would think the police department would know that. I think the police department...
And all the phone calls that they've already gotten? Okay, we're going to appeal it.
I was trying to speak, but go ahead.
But I have one more thing that was brought to my attention, where they applied for a micro-business through the CCC. They sent an application in. So to me, and I was told that the micro-business application automatically includes retail. So even though their plan's saying they just want to do wholesale and cultivation, but they could lead into retail eventually down the road?
No, they have to come back before the planning board. No?
Because one thing, I was told, that it has to be under 5,000 square feet. Their building is bigger, 8,500. And they need at least 40 spots of parking, and they don't have that either.
For retail, it'd be a completely different application. It'd have to be approved first by the city manager and then by the Lowell Police Department before it even gets to us.
So the application that they submitted to the CCC already?
I don't know what you mean by the CCC.
This is what I...
Can you tell me what the CCC is?
Cannabis Control Commission.
It's a list of, yeah, the CCC. It's a list of who's applied for licenses, submitted applications, and they're the only one that states "micro-business." Everybody else is manufacturing or retail. But like I said, they're... The micro-business includes everything automatically. Can I show you this? This is a printout from the computer.
No, I'm okay. I'm just looking at the advertisement. It's just a cultivation facility. And I'll check what attorney on, but what's only before us is cultivation facility.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
The light industrial zoning district does not allow retail recreational marijuana dispensaries. So there is no pathway for an applicant to open a recreational dispensary in a light industrial district.
So he couldn't come in this zone anyways. Thank you for that. Recreationals not allowed in this zone.
So what would be the purpose of them filing to the CCC for that application?
I can't speak for what other people do. I've stopped doing that as an attorney and worked in the court system for 44 years.
So there's no chance of any retail going in there whatsoever? No customers going and coming and going?
I mean, like I said, we have the application. Now that it's been formed, that for this zone, it's not even permitted.
But you're still going to allow police towing to go on and everything else?
It's totally up to the police, not the planning board. And hopefully, what I heard from counsel was, they're going to cut down on a lot of this stuff in the back. And hopefully, with this business in here, it's going to cut back on all the business that's there now. Because what these people are trying to put in is, you know, just the cultivation facility.
Yeah, but you're still going to have Mr. Kazangian continually accessing the property. And it's supposed to be a secure facility.
If he owns the property, I guess by law, he has a right to access it unless he has a lease with the tenant that says, "I will not come on your property," unless subject for improvements is what's required by a landlord.
So will the junk license be surrendered?
I have no control over junk licenses. We don't issue those. We only issue special permits or site plan approvals by the planning board. What he received from the past, some dumb thing, that's not before the approval of the board. Up to Development Services here in the city Lowell. If you want to call Development Services, they can answer that. We're just here up to see whether or not whether the cultivation facility meets the requirements of a site plan. This isn't even a request for a special permit. It's just a request for the site plan. And like I say, copies have been given to all the five city departments. They've been given to the police department. If it doesn't get approved by the police department, then this board cannot approve it. It's a prerequisite that has to be done and signed off before it gets to us. We don't even take a conditional. It has to be done, or we don't vote on the project.
We're still against this project.
You totally have a right to speak, whatever you like, and just try and answer some of the questions. But I understand what we're here for is a cultivation facility only.
When Mr. Kazangian purchased 705...
I'm sorry?
When Mr. Kazangian purchased 705 Dutton Street, the property across the street from my house where all the dumpsters are stored, that came with it. That was part of that business. So that's a way we're entering too. It's like, if they're leasing the building, does the property across the street from my house come with it too?
I don't, I think they're only leasing this one site, so I don't think they're leasing across the street. The lease agreement that they gave us is only for this area.
What will happen across the street at 680?
Then that would have to be on the lease agreement, which it is not. So they're only coming...
Right now, there's a business running there that's not even licensed.
I don't, I'm not here for the business across the street and license. We're only here with, before the board. I have no control what happens on sites that aren't in front of the board. What's across the street is not before us tonight, so I can't answer any questions. That's what's going on across the street. The applicant's just asking for 705 Dutton Street.
Yep.
And that's the only project that's in front of us, is 705.
Okay, well, we still oppose then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to me, guys, to this matter? Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Any board members have any questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can address a couple of concerns.
Sure. Have you, Counselor? Appreciate that.
We certainly appreciate the neighbor concerns, and it's certainly not the easiest thing to reside in an industrial zone. But just to alleviate some of the concerns that they may have had, Kazangian is vacating the building completely. So his offices won't be contained there anymore, as Artek Fire Sprinkler is also vacating. My client will have the entire building. Kazangian will utilize the site to tow cars across it, but he won't be utilizing the site to store cars or to keep the four, five, six, seven trucks that he's got there now. He's going to limit that to two tow trucks. The towing is an accessory use at the site, so I believe that it is allowed. Retail is not allowed. My clients have no interest in retail. That's not their business. They're getting into cultivation. This site will be much better. I mean, I'm having a hard time understanding the concerns because I understand it's a bad site. I've been there a couple of times. I've seen what the site looks like now. The site's going to look 100% better. It's going to be cleaned up. There won't be customers in and out. Of course, the towing across the lot is still going to happen because that's allowable. There'll be no, there's no junk license at the site. Kazangian's not going to be running a junk business there. My client will be taking the entire site, and there's no interest or any access from my client for the property across the street. So those are just responses.
Thank you, Counsel. I appreciate that. And if I look at the site, I think that if it does get approved, it will clean the site up. I mean, it will alleviate a lot of concerns. I mean, I've been down here several times. You know, Counsel, I go before the meetings and check all other sites before they start, like most of board members do. And I was down there on a couple of occasions, because I was there for the one on Dutton Street across the street. And then they had the other one that was in earlier for the other matter. So obviously, I've been down that site. And in the past, I've been around the corner for a couple of site visits and down the street a few times, so I'm very familiar with it. And when I was a young man, on that street is where the registry of motor vehicle was, and that's where I went to get my driver's license. I've been on the site for a long time, so... Thank you on that, Counsel. Any of the board members have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments and a couple of questions. In looking at the table of use in the city zoning ordinance, there is so much more that could go on that site that's allowable by land use that would be much more invasive to the abutters. So understanding, as Counselor so eloquently put, the delicate balances, and that's when you have conflicting uses within a zone. So unfortunately, your residential use, the neighbor's residential home in a light industrial zone. And of course, you know, when we tried to lay out the zoning some time ago in the city and trying to look at existing conditions, and where we could, we tried to put buffer zones. So you had a light industry. And then you had somewhat of a transitional zone, and then you had residential. But unfortunately, you're, there's no transition. You're light industry.
We have other zones, because Kazangian ripped that all out from the permits.
Well, no, no. Unfortunately, from a zoning perspective, it didn't exist. So unfortunately, that's the delicate situation here. I do feel, based on the allowable uses within the site, that this is one of the least invasive uses we could probably be looking at for this site from what's allowed within the zone. What I do have, what I would like to comment or would say is that what I would be looking to do is I think the lease spells out very clearly what was explained on the site plan. And I would be looking to make probably, you know, from Section B and C as part of the condition of the approval for the site plan. I think that addresses what the concerns are regarding the parking on the site and the use of the site within a certain timeframe. So I think that, Counsel, I think that would probably be appropriate. We incorporate that into any conditions that would be part of the site plan approval if the body so desires to approve the site plan.
And we agree with that 100%, and Mr. Kazangian has signed that document, so he agrees as well.
Okay. And then we do have a letter from the police department. They have reviewed the security plan. What we do is, one of the biggest concerns with these types of facilities is the odor mitigation. Obviously, and that's, in some instances, it's a little bit out of our control because it really is based on the state standards. But we certainly want to, we don't want to relinquish the oversight on that. So we try to incorporate that into any kind of approval so that the city would have, again, hopefully, some ability to address any odor mitigation issues that may result. I know we went through, it was some time ago, you provided a detailed plan for the odor mitigation. I think staff, Jared, was there any comments from staff relative to that? I think everybody, that was back in October, I believe.
There are no comments from staff regarding the odor mitigation plan.
And were there any still outstanding drainage issues? I think that...
The one comment that was put forward by the department is that the applicant would continue to work with DPD if there were any drainage issues to alleviate them. And we're fine with that as a condition.
Was there anything, Jared? Were we waiting from the engineering department at all? I couldn't find, I couldn't find anything.
No, no. What the counselor just summarized is generally what the comment was from the October 18th memo from staff. And I believe that that could be a condition of the board's approval.
Yeah, okay. All right, I think, Mr. Chairman, that's really all questions and comments that I had. Thank you.
Did you have any questions?
I don't have any.
Caleb, any questions, comments?
No more questions.
I don't have any questions or comments either. Thank you. So what's the request of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions. Jared, would you like me to just, would you like me to dispel out the various conditions of the lease or Section B through C of the lease to be incorporated into the site plan approval?
I think for posterity, if you read them out, and then when it comes to writing the decision, we can ensure that they're included.
Okay. The, it says landlord reserves an easement for access abutting properties owned by the landlord or affiliates to the west of the leased premises and further reserves the right and easement to park one commercial vehicle in the rear north of the subject property border in Cushion Street, one commercial vehicle in the back of the building in the northwest corner of the lot as shown on the attached plan. The tow truck shall be a minimum of three feet per zoning requirement from the structure and not block any proposed egress that may be required for the occupancy fit up in design. Up to four vehicles, automobile, indoor SUV, or pickup truck along the fenced area on the easterly side of the property, which abuts property owned by Alcaz Realty Trust located at 4 Wamisit Court. This parking area is for the benefit of the tenants and to, or guests of 4 Wamisit Court. Parking of vehicles at this location shall not interfere with the parking area for tenant Grow Team Gardens LLC. Landlord further agrees not to park commercial vehicles in this area. The chain link fence and gate in the rear of the building will be moved by landlord to the edge of existing pavement as shown on attached plan. So the fire apparatus will not need to go through the current gate. Landlord agrees not to use the access easement in the leased premises for towing operations during evening hours from 5:00 PM to 7:00 AM unless a snow emergency exists in the city of Lowell. And again, incorporate those as a condition of the site plan. Also, that the applicant agrees to work with DPD regarding any drainage issues that may arise in the development of the site. And the applicant agrees to work with DPD for any arising issues as a result of odor transmitted from the site. And the applicant agrees to comply with the state standards regarding odor mitigation.
Thank you, Mr. Vichet. So we do have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Caleb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair, vote yes. So the site plan is approved. Four in favor, none against. Hopefully, this works out and makes it a better site down there. Wish you well. Relax.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have a site plan review on 13 Wood Street. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing regarding an application by DSM Realty, Inc. for approval of a site plan review under Section 11.4. Inc. for approval of a site plan review under Section 11.4. The applicant is proposing facade and site improvements to the existing Middlesex Plaza Shopping Center, which is comprised of 72,229 square feet of retail space supported by a 286 space parking lot. The applicant is proposing site improvements to the facade of the shopping center and parking field improvements, including pedestrian access and safety, landscaping, and stormwater management upgrades. There is no proposed increase to the overall building area of the shopping center. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Sure, whatever's right there so the audience can see and we can see.
Eric Gerard, civil engineer with VHB. I'm here tonight with Kathleen Keane, traffic engineer at VHB, as well as Eric Brown with PCA Architects. We're here tonight to introduce improvements to the existing Middlesex Shopping Plaza. And this kind of stems from the Market Basket's commitment to the area during the recent approvals for the Pawtucket Boulevard site. It was discussed that they were committed to improving their existing store on Wood Street. So this is to formalize that site plan application. We're here tonight due to the fact that we are increasing, we're not, we're improving the facade of over 10,000 square feet. That's what's triggering the site plan review. As part of the improvements at the facility, they are also looking to improve the parking facility, significantly improve the pedestrian access, upgrade the sidewalks, connectivity into the site, significantly increasing the open space, the landscape area at the project in addition to the significant upgrade to the facade. I think as everyone knows, the site is pretty outdated, somewhat dilapidated, a little bit rundown, and it's all pavement. Guardrails kind of barrier between pedestrian and the sidewalks that are out there along the roadways. So we're here tonight for a review and approval of this project. Current reviews with the city, we have met with city staff. When we initially kicked this off with city staff, it was back in 2018 in September, where we had the entire team together discussing the site plan improvements. Originally, the only trigger we were going to go in for was for the facade improvements and get administrative approval on the site upgrades. During that time, we discussed stormwater management improvements with the wastewater utility and got an agreement for increasing the existing pipe capacities on site. So there's the existing stormwater network that's out there now, which ties into the city infrastructure in the right of way. So as part of that discussion, we're kind of limited on sites. We're going to increase the pipe sizes where we can. There's a lot of eight, 10, and 12-inch pipes currently out there. So on our main trunk lines, we're going to increase those, many of them up to 24 inches just to get some additional capacity. The city was happy with that. The connections into the city system are staying the same. I believe there's an eight or 12-inch pipe connecting into Wood Street. That pipe connection remains so that the same flows will be realized coming out. So we're not going to surcharge additional areas of the city. So it'll act as a wear structure. The additional volume will be realized during those kind of surcharge and heavy rain events. However, that coupled with the reduction in impervious area will be a significant improvement for this overall area. Additionally, for water quality benefits, the existing onsite catch basins get replaced with the four-foot sumps with the hoods to provide some additional water quality benefits. As I mentioned, there is a significant increase in the pervious area, which is primarily with all the perimeter landscaping that we're upgrading. The site will, it's mimicking the landscaping improvements at the Pawtucket site, so they've kind of revamped that overall look that's going to be out there, adding in some entry walls, nice-looking entrance driveways, as well as perimeter landscaping and interior landscaping. The loading facilities at the site remain the same. It's all along the back, the rear of the building, so we aren't changing that area. They are in considerations for putting an onsite generator to support the store. That has not yet been finalized, but they are looking to put that in if they can find the proper space for that. So primarily, we did receive some comments. I think the letter was dated last Friday from city staff. We have been coordinating with city staff, like I said, since 2018 in September, and then we, with the new submittal, we got some official comments. So we're certainly prepared to go through those if you would like. I'd like to have Eric Brown speak on the architectural improvements, and then we can, yeah, move on to questions if you'd like.
If you go through the staff comments first and then the architectural, I'd appreciate that. Can you do it that way?
Go through the staff comments first?
Yeah, and then we go to the architectural, and then, sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. So, I'd like to start. Number one, the project triggered site plan review for the 10,000 square foot. So that's not a, that's just...
Yeah, just a little background for us.
Background, yep. Facade improvements. We're not increasing the gross square footage. The Board may consider the follow-in site improvements in addition to the many improvements proposed by the applicant. Install an electric vehicle infrastructure in the parking area for future use. So we did discuss this with the applicant. And with this being a smaller store footprint, it's about, I think, 30,000 to 40,000 the actual Market Basket area. The people visiting the store, it's not anticipated to be a longer duration. In addition, to get the infrastructure for the electric vehicle stations and the parking field, it's a significant upgrade in there. So at this point, it's not in the plan to put those in. The other site at Pawtucket, they are, they do have the EV ready. That's a different building. There's the inside court for the food courts and all that. So working with LRTA to either improve the bus facility, the bus shelter on the corner, or working with them to relocate the bus stop within the site. So the applicant is committed to working with city staff and LRTA to identify kind of the appropriately scaled bus shelter at their existing location. We're not asking for them to come through the site at this time. It is still a pretty, you know, tight site, but we will work with LRTA to improve the existing facility that's out there. The Board should request that the applicant provide details of the stormwater view team of the underground utility connectivity and condition, including video, when it becomes So part of the commitments for moving forward during construction is to TV all the existing drainage infrastructure lines out there, just so everyone knows where they go. That has not yet started, but we certainly will coordinate with the city when they do that investigation. We can certainly coordinate with them. And if anything new pops up unanticipated, we can certainly coordinate that stormwater design with them or sewer design. The Board should request that the applicant provide evidence to support your stormwater management and sizing calcs. So we did provide the stormwater memo that identified the pipe increases with the additional capacity, kind of the discussion I just ran through. So we are providing double the capacity of the stormwater management system that's out there within that existing piping network. So we can, if the Board or the city would like further discussion on that, we can certainly work with LRTA and the Engineering Department. I mean, LWWU, excuse me. Number six, the Board should inquire if the proponent has any plans to relocate the freestanding sign at the intersection further down Wood Street. The Board should note that the size is legal, but staff notes considering the Wood Street and Middlesex intersection would prefer the sign at another location if the applicant is willing. Currently, right now, there are no plans to move that sign. It is a pretty large sign, and it would be a substantial cost to move that. So right now, they would like to keep it at that same location, keep the existing sign. Number seven, the plan notes that they will relocate light pole currently located dead center of the enter exit to Wood Street and identifies the location of the R&amp;R signs. But where the R&amp;R signs, there's a power utility pole that seems to be omitted from the plan. This seems to be repeated all on Wood Street side of the property. The Board should inquire as to whether the applicant, if the power is being dropped and rerun underground. So that note's referring to the existing light poles at the Wood Street intersection. We are doing minor changes there, so we are moving the light poles. So there are new light poles that are going to be installed, LED fixtures. A site lighting plan with the new locations has been included in the package. There are, the existing utility poles are shown on Wood Street. We are proposing not to move those or relocate them. The existing overhead wires will remain on that stretch, so there won't be any required electrical changes. The new light poles, they will have new conduit run. That will be determined by the site electrical engineer, and that's typically part of the building permit package. Number eight, the Board should include in its decision that the applicant is responsible replacing and repairing all public sidewalks around the site as needed. The applicant previously committed to this work. We are showing replacing all those sidewalks. I believe we are making them even wider, so it will be a much nicer looking area for pedestrians. As we get into the transportation comments, recommend a right turn only in and out, disallowing left turns in and out. At the curb cut on Middlesex Street is approximately 90 feet to the traffic signal with the Roark Bridge, Wood Street, Middlesex Street, which is heavily congested intersection. The site has two other entrance exit locations on Wood Street and on Princeton Street. I think best if maybe Kathleen Keane kind of runs through the transportation.
Absolutely.
And then...
Yeah, she can handle that if you'd like. That's no problem. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Keane, a transportation engineer with VHB. So for comment number nine related to the Middlesex driveway, I do want to note that the site plan does include a number of improvements already at this. So there is an existing light pole that's dead center of that driveway that will be relocated, improving that access point. We're also narrowing the curb cut, creating a shorter pedestrian crossing distance in that location. And then, as you can see on the site plan, and Eric touched on this, but within the addition of the landscaped islands in there, in the area directly in front of Market Basket and closest to this driveway entrance, we are reducing the parking count. So we anticipate that the demand to and from this driveway will be lessened already, resulting in another benefit. So with all these improvements that we're already showing, the applicant would like to maintain this as a full access driveway moving forward as part of the site plan. For comment number 10, show the locations of bike racks on site. There are bike racks, just where Eric's pointing, just to the west of the Market Basket, close to the entrance to the store. Comment 11, there is an LRTA bus stop on the corner of Wood and Middlesex. Recommend improving the bus stop by adding a bench and shelter on the corner, or discuss work with LRTA to determine if they would divert the bus route into the parking lot to drop off and pick up in front of the store. This is a similar comment that Eric previously answered, but the applicant is committed to providing or working with the city and LRTA to improve the bus stop in its existing location with the appropriate shelter and benches. And then comment 12, evaluate if any anti-speeding measures such as speed humps are required for the delivery path behind the building to ensure the area is not used as a cut through. Today, the owner doesn't see this as an issue, but we will be installing signage at both those rear entrance driveways indicating that they're for loading and service only to help, you know, reduce any customer traffic through those areas. So that concludes the comments.
Thank you. I think Eric was going to do the architecturals, correct? Thank you, sir. Yes, just make sure the green button's on. You should hit the pick it up with your hand, and that will amplify. Yeah. So if you pick one up, just push the green, the little level before and if the green light comes on, that will amplify it.
Eric Brown, Prowl's Cholinsky Associates from Cambridge. Just starting with, familiarizing you with the existing conditions. A little bit rundown, a little bit dated. You know, the site itself is in pretty rough shape, and Eric has already discussed a lot of the site plan improvements. So we've had numbers of meetings with Mr. Demoulis and his staff, and the basic approach here is to just create a simple, clean, modern, fresh look on the site with using a couple different colors of brick, metal panels, and some block. We're renovating the bank on the end, and we're renovating also the other side. There's no tenant on the end, current on the end tenant at this time, and then the run in the middle. And with an existing center, it's a little bit more challenging than building a new building because you're dealing with existing roof framing that can only take certain snow loads. You're dealing with fenestration windows that, you know, kind of need to remain in those same locations. You have existing column locations. The grocery store is actually going to remain open during construction. So there's a number of challenges that we're faced with, and that kind of limits the approach. But in some ways, it informs us just a simple, a simple approach. And so that's what we've done. This kind of shows the ends of the building. We're going to refinish this side, dress up the drive-through a little bit, and then also refinish the side of the bank. And the bank is going to remain open during construction as well. Just have a couple of perspective views here. Kind of get a little bit better sense of what's going on. We have one material of brick here with a metal panel that wraps the corner, block at the base, gray brick here where the sign band is, and then a metal panel, kind of eyebrow that extends over the entrance to create a shelter, a shelter from the rain. This view is kind of from the corner where the bank is, so it's looking at the grocery store from the other direction. You can see what I was saying here about the canopy, and we're using metal panel on the bank and fiber cement panels down low in a horizontal format. And then this is basically a view from the street that shows a partial view of this long run in the middle. This needs to stay flexible because with small tenants, a lot of times, in the future, there may be shifting of demising walls. So we basically kept this one, kind of one consistent design approach to allow for flexibility in there and then have the tenant on the left and the grocery store in the bank kind of anchor the corners.
Anything further at all? Anything else? No? Okay, thank you. At this point in time, I'll turn it over, see if anybody here in the public wants to speak. Anybody here this evening want to speak in favor of this project? In favor, in favor, in favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? This time, I'll turn it over for any board member comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Vashet.
I was almost tempted to go up and speak in favor of the project, Mr. Chairman. Nice to see the...
It's nice to see the improvement to the site.
Yes, Mr. Fashet.
I was almost tempted to go up and speak in favor of the project, Mr. Chairman. Nice to see the...
It's nice to see the improvement to the site. You know, it's a typical 1960s, 70s type of approach to what we thought was good development, auto-oriented, easy to maintain, black surface, hot top, and it's one of the last sites that looks like that around here for at least the supermarket. We still have the Brunswick Bowling Alley across the way in some other sites, but certainly welcome the improvements. In, to compliment the architect, he didn't overembellish on the landscaping to try to make that even look better because that's a kind of a pet peeve of mine, so, but it's nice to see the landscaping that's going into the site. And so, obviously, that's a tremendous improvement. The, in the facade, obviously, is, was in need of a facelift. And it appears very clear, and it's nowhere in your narrative, I think you imply that, but, so, you, the supermarket is maintaining the same footprint? You're not, with the empty space, you're not expanding at all? Or just, I just thought that was kind of...
Yes, it's maintaining the same footprint as it is today.
With the idea of getting additional tenants to fill those vacant stores?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, that's good. I mean, the idea is to provide variety for the people in the neighborhood, too, to have hopefully some shopping opportunity there. I do have, you know, in this board, we, and especially that whole area, very delicate. A lot of cars going through there, Middlesex Street, Wood Street, Drum Hill, Roark Bridge, and a similar site, the Lowell Fiveson Savings Bank, matter of fact, was right next to the Market Basket on that site, and Town Cleaners was. And they moved on Westford Street, and they're the tenant leasing. It was actually Mr. Kassangen, who we discussed earlier, was actually the one building the building. And they wanted to have a left-hand turn coming out of that building. And it was recommended by the traffic engineer not to allow it, and this board did not allow it. And when you think about the proximity to an intersection that has the Roark Bridge, a dedicated lane where people can just fly right down, take a right-hand turn off the Roark Bridge on the Middlesex Street, you got CVS across the street with people pulling out, you got this exit here, right within a stone's throw to the intersection of the Roark Bridge, Wood Street, and Middlesex Street. I think it's a stretch. I've been there many times, and you'd like to think that the, you know, in traffic speak, the maneuver is so dangerous, people won't take it. Well, it's just not the case. I've spent a number of times at that intersection and just scratching my head when I've seen people still do the maneuver. To the point where this board, matter of fact, ensured on the Walgreens development diagonally across, that when they were pulling out, that there was no way they were going to cross the lanes to get onto Middlesex Street to get onto Wood Street. So, even though it's not a left-hand turn, we made sure it was constructed in a way that you had to take a right-hand turn and take, and go right onto the Roark Bridge. You didn't have an opportunity to switch lanes. I just think it's a bad maneuver. The city's traffic engineer doesn't recommend that it be allowed, and I certainly would not be in favor of that. And I would agree as far as the cut-through, though, in the back with the signage, I think would be sufficient. In the infancy of drive-through windows for pharmacies, in its couple hours of my life I'll never get back, when we approved the Rite Aid drive-through pharmacy, I sat there for a couple hours just to see how that was going to work. And I struggle to keep myself awake, so it was, you know, the pharmacy drive-throughs don't get a lot of business, and quite frankly, there wasn't cut-through traffic coming through the back. It's not an easy maneuver to get through there, and there's some vehicles back there, you know. It's actually, you're better off to go to the intersection and go around. So, from that perspective, like I said, I, the only thing I would be looking for, and I think you agreed on what we would talk about as conditions, I agree not having the bus terminal within the site because it really is going to be a tough maneuver. And I like what you're doing because it, I mean, I'll tell you what I had to do today. I had to inspect a piece of property in North Chemsford. I got to Wood Street, the traffic was backed up to the entrance to this site. I went into this site, went to the exit over where Rite Aid is, and came out onto Princeton Boulevard, and went to North Chemsford. So, with the changes you're going to make to the site, you're going to discourage that kind of maneuver. So, I think that's going to help because really, it's helter-skelter once you get in there. And even as you have a, yeah. And so, anyways, I think I've said enough about that. I think everybody recognizes that the challenge is there. So, this is a tremendous improvement. I'm happy to see this come forward here this evening, and applaud you for the efforts on this. And like I said, the only thing, I think we've all agreed on the conditions, other than the fact that I would not be looking to allow the left-hand turn out of that driveway. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
You're welcome. Excuse me. Mr. Lockhart, any questions?
I just have one question. I agree with Mr. Fashet's comments. You really improved the site tremendously, but you had mentioned the location of a generator that you haven't located yet. What are your preliminary thoughts on that? What might that do to the noise levels? I don't know, you know, the specifications on that thing, but I guess we just give a little background on that.
So, currently, they're not positive where it's going to be, but the realistic only location is somewhere in the back corner of this area. There's no room along that rear property line right now to fit that, and that's also adjacent to those existing structures. So, they were considering in the corner between the bank and Market Basket at that location.
That's what would be a typical installation.
Yeah, it would be an enclosed-style generator. I don't know the exact dimensions because the, it would be smaller likely than the other store just because it is a smaller footprint. I'm not positive on the specs.
It wouldn't be visible.
Correct. Yeah. And it would likely be screened as best as possible with, we could add some extra landscaping around it.
Just following up, did they ever consider putting them on the roof?
I'm not sure. I think structurally, would it be an existing building that may be...
Depending on the size?
That's probably a challenge. Correct.
Because I know some of the buildings, other sites, if they're big enough, they put things on the roof as well.
We can certainly ask them.
Okay. No problem. Anything else that you...
No, that's all.
Caleb, any questions?
I, I would, I have the same concern regarding the mid-block left turn as well. I mean, given the heavy traffic and, I mean, the road is not very wide either. I mean, so, I can see if, when there's no traffic, it's doable, but I, so, I would not say support a left-hand turn, and I would agree with the transportation engineer with the city's comment. At most, I would think of maybe no left turn during certain hours, but, I mean, people, you have to enforce that, and people have bad habits, so that's my comment. And that's all, all I have, Chairman.
Kathleen, do you want to be heard on that? Do you feel, I mean, I know before we went through, but I just want to know, the board members made a few comments, obviously. Is that something, if you want to be heard further on, we'll hear from you.
Yep. So, the applicant would be willing to monitor that location as part of a condition of approval. If the board would be amenable to that. There is, you know, some concern with if, you know, left-hand turns are not allowed out that driveway, they would actually be added to the signal at the Roark Bridge. So, we would want to, you know, monitor and then potentially understand impacts between the signal and the driveway and work with the city's traffic engineer to identify an appropriate measure.
Thank you.
Sorry, and one more point to that. We would also want to monitor likely about three months after these improvements are in place, but making sure that the store on Potaka Boulevard is also open and operational to understand any changes in patron activity that would be a result of having both stores.
So, the other alternative is if the board voted to make the right-hand turn only, and what we've done several times in the past is after the store is up and running, if you want to come back in for mortification, now we know how the other side of the river's working, how this is working, you can run it by transportation or before the planning board and come in for an amendment, just to keep something out there as a future idea.
I appreciate the idea. Unfortunately, at this point, I think the applicant wants, is hoping to maintain full access with a monitoring program in place.
I'll hear from the board members. I just want to give you an opportunity to be heard on that.
Yeah. I'm sorry, can you elaborate on a monitoring program? I, how do you envision...
Monitor, yes.
So, we would complete traffic counts at the driveway to understand left-turn volumes in and out, along with observations, to understand the impacts and how that interacts with the adjacent intersection with the Roark Bridge. And then, from there, discuss what those results with the city's transportation engineer to determine if it truly is a problem, if it's utilized significantly, and then take that next step to look at if those restrictions are in place, how does that affect the adjacent signal as well?
And again, I, all due respect, I mean, doing new counts, that has been counted, accounted, and recounted, and one of the issues would be people taking a right off of the Roark Bridge onto Middlesex Street. And I'm not necessarily sure the opening of the new Market Basket is going to change that pattern because what you're suggesting is that people coming over the Roark Bridge are taking a right than taking a left using that entrance. You know, I just, and that's a difficult maneuver. So, I respectfully disagree with, I don't know what more that's going to give us, having additional counts. I really don't. And so, and if we're, if the result is, well, people aren't taking the left because there's too many cars, and what would be the objection to not allowing? And granted, you know, early, you know, nine o'clock on a Sunday morning, or 10 o'clock on a Sunday morning, somebody would be able to do it. But, I mean, they, you know, I mean, that would just be my comment on that. I just, I just have concerns with that.
Thank you for your comments.
Sure. Thank you.
Would we be able to continue to discuss, continue this to the next year, and so we can discuss this with the applicant?
Well, I'd like to make a decision this evening, but the intent wasn't to continue it, but I just...
So, in discussing with Jim Lamp, with LT Development, he apologized, he can't be here, he just, in discussing with it, there are other potential tenant implications as far as if they restrict that and making sure that, you know, tenants are on board with that as well. So, we just want to make sure that everyone was comfortable with that potential condition at this point.
I have a question. So, is it possible we elaborate, like, the significance of doing a left turn there to maybe the tenants or, you know, for the landlord, like, what benefits it could have compared to if the customers go out the other way?
So, if left turns were restricted in and out of the driveway, how that would affect traffic flows?
No, it's more like how it affects, like, how the tenant, customers might not choose to come or, you know, affect business. I mean, I see that, it seems like the position is you want to do the left turn, and we see, we foresee an impact to the traffic, but I just want to understand the restriction impact to the tenants as well.
Yes. So, specifically, the tenants of Market Basket and the bank on the Wood, or the Wood Street, Middle, sorry, Middlesex Street side of the site would be impacted that their customers would, you know, be traveling and may have to travel past the site to go through another driveway. So, it's not as, it's not as convenient for the customers out there. So, when you're, you know, they may see the bank signage and want to continue straight on Middlesex Street if they're coming along that already, and then enter the site that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, given, Mr. Chairman, given the recommendation of the traffic engineer was not to allow it, we, it was the same argument with the Lowell Five. Matter of fact, the president of the bank was here to try to argue to keep the bank, the left-hand turn, and the recommendation of the, you know, was clearly, it's not a good location for that. It just, it just isn't. From a traffic engineering perspective, it's not a good, you're talking business decisions versus from a traffic engineering perspective. And we did not allow it. So, in fairness, I guess, I, you know, tended to, again, I think it's very positive what's happening here, was hoping to make a decision here this evening. But I have no problem if you'd like to even have Natasha as well discuss it with you as far as what everybody thinks would be the proper way to address it. I know what the recommendation is here specifically, and part of the responsibility of this board for site plan review is the safety, the wellness and safety of the public, period. That's, site plan review is pretty dry, cut and dry. And that's one of the overriding guidance that we have. And if I have something from the traffic engineer that doesn't recommend it, we all know the site very well, and I live, you know, very close, on the other side of the river, but very close, and I travel that area an awful lot. And I know that's a bad maneuver. So, I would just, I guess I would make a condition to continue so that the applicant can work with the city's traffic engineer and your client, come up with something that I think addresses with the concern that was expressed here in the memo. No objection to that?
That's what you requested for anyways, right? To be able to speak?
Sorry, we were trying to call.
That's quite all right. If you need a couple minutes, we can take a brief recess while you go out in the hall.
Do you mind if we take a recess while we can reach out?
We have no problem. You're allowed to tell them to turn the TV on. We'll talk. So, what I'll do at this time, I'll take a five-minute recess. Okay? You can go speak to your client in the hall, and we won't go far, okay? Right now, Mr. can go up the mics? Sure.
My son just got out of college. I'm going to...
You're excused?
Go.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Merry Christmas, sir. Welcome home. Where's your son go to school?
University of Delaware.
Oh, good.
Medical Engineering.
Oh, wow. Yep. I mean, the renderings are done. It's just the traffic now, so you did your job, sir. So, wish you well, sir. Merry Christmas. Okay. So, unless you want me to take a five-minute recess?
That's the tough part, right?
Can I have your attention? We're going to stop back up. Okay, so we had a discussion about the turn. Did you have, may I hear back from the applicant? Did they have, have they had a chance to speak with some of their powers-to-be, as they should say?
We have spoken with the applicant. Jim is amenable to working with the traffic engineer to revise the site plan, to include the appropriate signage, to restrict the left turns at the driveway. He did note that we will also be getting traffic counts out here. And like you said, if, based on that review, we may come back sometime in the new year to revisit this, but we're fine with the condition of restricting them pending working with the traffic engineer to identify the appropriate measures.
We never have a problem with something coming back. You know, if we approve a condition, they found out in the future that something can be approved, something's going to make it better.
Yep.
As a result of, you know, we've been talking about the temporary bridge because that Rourke temporary bridge, when it's effect back in the eighties, it's supposed to be done within like, within like, permanent building in like 10 years, you know, and like, and we don't see it happening. But we have small progress that might be happening from Mr. Bichette, who's on a reasonable planner. So.
And the second piece is we will also just confirm all the lease tenants, the tenant leases out there to make sure that this restriction would not violate those as well.
So just so I understand, so would be, so you're looking for us to continue it or make it a condition?
We're looking to close with the condition that left turns will be restricted at the driveway.
Okay, and then it would be monitored?
Nope. They're going to go along with what the traffic engineer agreed with.
Yeah, yeah.
And then if they want to come back in the future and request an amendment to the plan after everything goes through...
After they go through it. Okay, all right. I just want to make sure what your expectation is and what our expectation is.
Yeah. So basically, what I agree is that if they want to come back and try to change that, they'd come back and try to make an amendment to the site plan. Am I correct?
Yeah, it would be reviewing the accounts existing now as they stand and then also seeing how that impacts the existing movements that are out there.
Yeah, it's a lot of...
So not necessarily when the new stores open, but also right now.
Sure. Oh, I get that. Yeah, you can come back at it anytime.
Yes.
Any further questions for any board members? If not, we can entertain a motion when we're not allowed.
All right, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions. The applicant will work with DPD to relocate or find the best location for the, and to work with the LRT to relocate the bus parking stop as where it currently is located. And again, I think it was more not necessarily within the site, but the general location of that, of where it is right now. The applicant shall, and I'm still wanting to provide detailed stormwater details to the stormwater review team and underground utility connectivity and condition, including video when it becomes available. And as you said, that was something that you would be doing. The applicant shall provide evidence to support the stormwater management and sizing calculations acceptable to the city's engineering department. The applicant shall be responsible for replacing, repairing all public sidewalks around the site as needed. And the right, in a signage requiring a right turn only in and out, disallowing left turns in and out at the curb cut on Middlesex Street. And I don't know if it was in the site plan, but again, the signage will be put on the site plan, restricting the real entry to the building, or behind the building, shall we say, for loading and, for loading purposes only.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Bichette. Do we have a second?
I'd like to maybe add something here.
Sure, go ahead.
The light pole, I've agreed to move that, but that needs to be moved, obviously.
Do you have no, any problem amending the motion to including moving the light pole?
Which light pole was that though?
That was the one I think they had in the, which was the one, that light pole that you're going to move?
Right there on the...
Which was going to be, that was moved in the site plan, right? Is that?
Correct. It's already, it's shown on the site plan as...
It's already moved?
Been moved.
Yeah, on the site lighting plan, the...
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah. Okay, just wanted to make sure, make sure I didn't miss anything. Okay.
So we have those conditions, and we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Bichette, second by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the vote carries four in favor and none against. Good luck, wish you well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now that was quicker than a continuous.
All right.
You can act as well, it's a job well done. We're done. You're welcome. So moving along on the agenda, we have administrative signature authority, which the land court needs to showing of the signature of the majority of the planning board members. So we don't need a vote on this, just sign it, correct? Do we not vote to approve it? Jared or...
I believe the board previously voted to approve this.
Okay.
So this letter now just needs to be signed by the majority of the board members.
So I'll make a motion that we approve this new signature authority for the land court, and those who are present here tonight can sign. That's myself. Mr. Bichette, you want to sign? Mr. Lockhart, you want to sign? So I made a motion on the floor, second by Mr. Bichette. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's a motion carries with the four board members present. Yeah. Okay, let me see if I can get your signature if you could. You can give that to Jared if you would. Thank you. Moving along, do we have any notices from any board members?
Our historic board meeting, our next meeting is Monday, January 13th, but our last meeting we had a couple of very interesting projects. One is the UTAC downtown of Warren Street, you know, St. Paul's Church.
Yep, very similar to that, yep.
There's an outside area that they're going to turn into a little park that will be led, really a nice, nice addition to already a nice space that they have there. We can look forward to that in the new year. And we did make some progress on our downtown historic district mural policy that will continue in January as well. That's coming along. I guess there's more and more requests for that type of...
The mural thing, yeah. Okay.
That's all I have.
Any other board members have anything? Mr. Bichette?
Mr. Chairman, last week, we had the December NEMCOG meeting, Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. And without divulging too much information, because I believe a presentation will be made to the city council either in January or February regarding the Rourke Bridge. And so they've actually have funding to take it to the next stage. They will be doing design on three different options, I believe. And there is also an opportunity to progress in a parallel manner to actually help expedite the design phase. They'll obviously, without divulging too much at that, at this point, but I think the state is trying to find a way that they can fast-track it. But even under the definition of fast-track, I believe this next phase will probably take about two years. And then the whole idea is to try to identify funding for the bridge, which still has not been identified. But if we can get through the design phase within two years, then I'll actually put it in pretty good position. So, you know, stay tuned, but hopefully, I think I was giving it a decade, so we'll see.
Any further comments from staff or, yep, no notices?
So we currently do not have any agenda items for the first meeting in January, January 6th. There is a, not a public hearing deadline, there remains an agenda headline for December 23rd, but there is no opportunity for a public hearing item to come on for that January 6th meeting.
So staff, I'll keep in contact with you on that, for that meeting. All right, thank you. So we can entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
We have adjourned. And good night and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. And thank you, staff, and thank you, everybody else. Have a wonderful new year.